Welcome, everyone. Is it Mike okay? A G P, it doesn't sound like it's on all the way. How about now? That's, yeah, that's better. Thank you. All right, welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 26, 2017. We're at the Morro Bay Vets Hall, and this is a special meeting. It's a study session. It's starting at 4:00 P. M. For the record, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Makawetzki, I'm sure, will be here for our regular city council meeting, starting at 6:00 o'clock, which this study session is a preview, and we'll be doing the same presentation come 6:00 o'clock. So there's no opening remarks or pledge of the flag at this point. It's just a special study session. So we'll go right into the agenda. We do have public comment. We are limiting public comment to 10 minutes. And then we have the full public time, public comment time allotment for the city council meeting at 6:00. So I've got three speaker slips for public comment, and I'll just go ahead and start with that. Judy Newman.
Okay.
And then Barry Brannon. And then Carrigan Mahan. And so we're going to have public comment for the regular city council meeting as well. Okay, thanks.
Barry Brannon, City of Morro Bay. Mayor, council and members, council members and staff, thank you for hearing me today this evening. My wife and I were two of the appellants to the Coastal Commission when a previous council overrode the City Planning Commission and issued a permit to build a new sewer treatment plant on top of the drying beds at the old plant location. The reason for our appeal was that was the only way to stop the previous council from building a facility that was wrong in many ways. The new plant was just like the old one. It had a tall office building close to the beach. Besides that, there was no odor control. There was a token water reclamation effort. The plant design did not incorporate the current technologies, and there was a possibility that the old plant site could be used for better purposes than a sewer plant. I was convinced that if the city were to use the designs that other small cities had used, we could have a small, efficient plant that would recycle the water, and it would look good. Our council has now done the necessary reviews required by the Coastal Commission and Regional Water Control Board. We hired consultants that did what we asked. We added a new city corporate yard facility and a solar farm to design, and a new multimillion-dollar office building worth $9 million. The project creep and expensive consultants have brought us to where we are. I have learned, and I know the council has learned, that the cost to do these things is beyond what we citizens can afford. Now let's come back to the council to decide on what we are going to do and where we're going to do it. You have all the information and ideas you need to make a decision. My appeal to you is don't ask for more money. A satisfactory water treatment facility can be built with the bunny that is now flowing to the city from the previous 218 vote. This is only if you don't allow the unsupervised consultants to waste it. Take control. Don't let the search for perfection kill the reasonable and the possible. No 218 vote.
Carrigan, Carrigan Mahan, and then Bill Martoni, and then Patrick Sparks.
Good afternoon, city council, staff. Carrigan Mahan, Morro Bay resident. I spent time with Tom Ross yesterday on the phone, going through his letter with him. And the fact is, as Mr. Ross pointed out accurately and specifically in his letter to you yesterday, that Toro Creek is a viable and realistic option here, which, for whatever reason, wasn't even considered in the five-site review. I have met with Mr. Enns twice. And the bottom line is, we can deal with all the outside agencies throughout the causes of this, the course of the year, throughout the course of this next year, we can deal with all the outside agencies and do whatever we have to do. In one year, we can expand that plant. I respectfully think it's time to give the Nunley-Rickenbach team notice, hire a project manager that will work independently with Cayucus, and this is, from what I understand, from four hours with Mr. Enns, this is all-in at 50 million bucks. We can even save a couple, 3 million, if we made up our minds within the next few months, which is probably not going to happen. That's wishful. But the pipe that goes from the highway up to the plant, we would have to put in our own, or we could expand it when they drill in probably three months. That's only a couple, 2, 3 million. I mean, you know, around here, we throw millions around like it's thousands, so what's 2 or 3, 4 million and putting in our own pipe? But I don't know why it's not being recognized. I don't, I don't know. I don't understand. If it's a personality thing, I think we really need to kind of get past that, if we can do that for 50 million. Later tonight, Attorney Patrick Sparks is going to speak to the possibility of finding a code that I can't cite, CCR 14-13080. No, that's not it. Anyway, I'm out. Thank you.
So we, we have 10 minutes for public comment, and so Bill Martoni, and then we have Patrick Sparks.
Good afternoon, Bill Martoni.
And I'm going to call it at 10 minutes, so we can get on with the presentation.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll try. Just real quick, I agree with the previous owner that Toro Creek should have been also on the agenda to look at. Originally, the reason it wasn't looked at, it was never for sale. The oil companies indicated they were never interested in selling it. The one point on Toro Creek that everything, everyone's probably missing, it's not inside the coastal zone. That eliminates 80% of your problems on time lag, jumping through hoops, everything else. It's so simple. Originally, I suggested the Tri-W property. I suggested the Tri-W city property because it would be under your jurisdiction. Across from the roundabout, there was a hidden valley, totally out of sight. I know you pushed a mile further down the road into County ag ground on the Tri-W. It's not a bad site. It's strictly the distance, and where the city site would have gravity fed into both basins as far as your recycled water. The one point that I noticed in the staff report, and we've always talked about the cost of pumping, they stated that the cost of pumping for one year, the wastewater to all these sites ran anywhere from about $30,000 to $45,000. Your labor cost to run the plant is 750. Your pumping costs are zero. So even if you stick with your current Tri-W site, the only complaint would not be your pumping cost, but the cost of the pipeline extension. And that, again, had always been originally equated at about a million a mile, which is like 3 miles. It shouldn't be any more than 3 to 5 million, not the 20 to 40 million. You can go over farm ground. You don't have to tear up the city. You can go up as high as the roundabout. From there, you don't even need a force main. You can gravity down to your existing site, should you choose that site. So if you're thinking of the pipeline cost, you might think about just going across the farm ground, not tearing up the city. It would be 3 to 5 million, and then gravity feeding down the other half to your site. But I truly think Toro Creek, out of the politics, much simpler, piggyback. And also, you have a labor cost of $750,000 a year to run each plant. If there was some way you could share those labor costs, that's an annual expense that you could eliminate. So lastly, I think your Hanson site has already been rejected. It's across from the high school. It's your future entryway. It's no different than the existing plant, and I don't think that's your best choice. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to have to conclude public comment. I just want to stick to the 10 minutes. We are opening a public comment for the regular city council meeting, so everybody will have the chance to speak at that time, to keep on track with both the study session, get all the information out for this part of the special meeting. We're going to go ahead and close public comment, and then start moving on to the presentation. Once again, once we get into the regular city council meeting, we'll open up for public comment again. Thanks. And so with that, I'll move on to, I'll move on to the special meeting agenda and the presentation of the water reclamation facility update, and I'll turn that over to our staff. Are there agendas in the back, Dana? There are agendas in the back?
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. We're here to present the findings from the updated site comparison report. It's getting put up on the screen right now. And we're going to start this off with a video prepared by our deputy city manager, Ikani, and utilities manager, that give an overview of the sites that were under consideration with this updated site comparison report. So we'll go to the next slide. There's a link to that video. The yellow overlay gives an approximation of the site location on the property, and the drone footage was supplied by our Morro Bay Police Department. Again, I want to thank our police department for supplying the drone and piloting that drone, so we could get that footage, and our deputy city manager, Ikani, for doing the video production on that. Tonight, we are here to present the updated site comparisons report for the five sites that council directed staff to look at at the July 11th council meeting. We're asking city council to consider the status report, and specifically related to their direction, and during the regular city council meeting, to provide direction as necessary, including, but not limited to, proceeding with planning and permitting at a preferred site, conduct additional community outreach, provide additional information for one or more sites, or provide any other direction that is deemed appropriate by the majority of the city council. Tonight, we're going to look at the recommendations, the background, go into a little bit of detail on the updated sites comparisons report, some refined cost opinions, an update on the outreach effort, and next steps, followed with question and answer from council. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Michael Nunley of MKN Associates to begin the first portion of the report. He will be assisted by Deputy Program Manager, John Rickenbach, when we get into more of the planning details for the report. Mike, would you proceed, please?
Thank you, Rob. So one of the first things I want to talk about briefly is how critical it is for cost control on a major public works project. We understand that. That's critical to us. And the elements that drive a project cost, typically, it's time, capital cost, and risk. And these are all things that we're going to talk about today in the sighting report. And I hope we have a good dialogue on these, because they can affect your capital costs in ways that can be sometimes hard to predict when you first start a project. So to give some background, at the July 11th city council meeting, we received the following direction on the wharf. First was direction to begin discussion with Coastal Commission and Regional Water Quality Control Board to determine the feasibility of constructing either a wastewater treatment plant or water reclamation facility west of Highway 1 at or near the existing plant site. Second was to begin evaluating costs and feasibility of a wharf, including recycled water, at the Gianini site, the Rigetti site, and a site west of Highway 1, again, at or near the existing plant, and then report back to council. Some additional items that came out of that meeting, or additional directions, were to report on the RFP process for a design-build project, and we did that on August the 8th, as you recall, on why we do things in the order we do them, with a lot of input and guidance from the city attorney as well in that process. And then also to evaluate all the outreach options, and prepare for further discussions with the community on the results of the city council requested items, and then to return to council with the recommended process. So now I'd like to move into the updated site comparison report. Potential water reclamation facility sites were examined based on council direction, and they included just a second look at the South Bay Boulevard site, Rigetti, Gianini, Hanson, an RV storage area, and the Dynegy tank farm. Now, a lot of information just since July has come in that's been particularly helpful to us in evaluating these costs and evaluating these sites. For example, a meeting, conference call, and then also a couple of letters from Coastal Commission staff, and from the deputy director, Dan Carl, that were particularly informative as to concerns they may have or issues that they would raise on the project. Also, being able to fully evaluate the recommendations from the peer review back in June, and incorporate those into really all of the sites, recommendations on level of odor control, tweaking some soft cost assumptions here and there. Those were, those were also particularly helpful. So the site comparison has been based on this new information. It's been based on capital costs, operating costs, regulatory challenges, the potential constraints, as well as potential opportunities. So Site 1, the South Bay Boulevard site, relatively higher cost compared to the others, farther from most reclamation opportunities, farther from the city's existing wastewater collection system. And that's really the nature of the cost difference between that site and the others. But some key opportunities are lower risk, and really in terms of timing and cost control. Our ability to predict costs at that site, because of the relatively straightforward permitting process, is higher than it would be at other sites, where we would not know permit conditions for several months, perhaps upwards of a year or two years. Time, the ability to move quickly with that, with that project. It's far from existing residential uses. The large site provides design flexibility. It's relatively free of Coastal Commission resource concerns. The site acquisition is straightforward. There's a potential for land conservation part of the area, and it's a longer pipeline route, but it's mostly in city right-of-way, which, which simplifies the property acquisition and simplifies some of the coordination. I don't want to take away from the fact, though, that it is, that the pipelines are expensive. They're, that's the difference between a lot of these sites. But in terms of the, the opportunity there, it's mostly in city right-of-way. Pipeline installation can be scheduled with other paving work or road improvements that may be required on Quintana Road, for example. Site 2, Hanson and RV storage.
Excuse me, Mike. Let me just interrupt just for a second. We're showing a green rectangle on all these exhibits, and that's a representative site area, not to say that it, the treatment plant site will, that's approximating 5 acres, will take 5 acres, or will be a rectangular in shape, but it's just to give a relative size of the typical facilities that would be required there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Hanson and RV storage. So really, some key constraints. The main one are permitting risk through California Coastal Commission. And Coastal Commission previously denied an upgrade permit for the existing plant at an adjacent location. A long-term relocation condition from Coastal Commission's likely, based on the letter and interaction we've had with Coastal staff. And the permitting process would take longer and cost more. There's an estimate Coastal staff gave us of approximately 2 years, similar to what it took the last time the city, between when the project was appealed to Coastal and when, and when the hearing was, was held for denial of the permit. And that's just to get to either a denial or acceptance. It's in the tsunami inundation zone. It's partially within the 100-year flood zone. Shoreline erosion and sea level rise have been identified as potential risks. Liqufaction potential at the site for soils. Visual sensitivity because of the location. Cultural resources. It's near the high school and residences, and the city owns the site jointly with the CSD. So some key opportunities, though, is it's the lowest-cost option. It's close to existing wastewater infrastructure. And when I say lowest cost, I mean capital cost. Close proximity to reclamation opportunities. And the city already owns part of the site, so that's also an opportunity, is the city's part-owner in the site already. But it would require negotiation with, with CSD and work with the CSD. So the next site, and this was another new site that was just evaluated in this work, the Dynegy tank farm. Now, from permitting perspective, Coastal Commission views this site similarly. They, you know, their, their comment on this one was, we previously denied an upgrade permit at a site nearby. Long-term relocation condition is going to be likely here, too, and the permitting process is likely to take longer and cost more. It's in the tsunami inundation zone. It's not in the 100-year floodplain like the, like the Hanson site, but shoreline erosion and sea level rise are still a concern there. Liqufaction potential from the soil. Cultural resources are present, and there are some acquisition unknowns. For instance, coordinating with, with Dynegy, very large company out of the area on the property acquisition, there are just, just some unknowns there, and we don't know what their plans might be for that property otherwise. Some key opportunities, though, second lowest-cost opinion, close to existing infrastructure, close to reclamation opportunities, outside of the flood zone, and it's not visually The next site is the Rigetti property, and we've, we're very familiar with this one. Some key constraints are neighborhood proximity. There are onsite coastal streams that would need to be mitigated. Cultural resource constraints along the pipeline route to get up to the Rigetti site, and we require a new memo of understanding for property acquisition. As you all recall, we had an MOU that, that had a, had a life to it and has since terminated. So some key opportunities, lower costs in South Bay, close to existing infrastructure, the sites at a slightly lower elevation, which reduces some of our pumping pressures and pumping costs. Potential for land conservation, and the potential to eliminate a lease cost for Nutmeg Water Tank. And Site 5, the final site evaluated in the report, is the Gianini site. So key constraints here, neighborhood proximity, in terms of distance to nearby homes, similar to Rigetti. Onsite drainage and jurisdictional waters that would need to be mitigated. The availability of the property, it's not currently for sale. Cultural resource presence. Improvements would be required to Little Moro Creek Road, both during construction and then afterwards, to protect that road, so it's in good shape for other, for residents, and also is in adequate condition for, for regular construction traffic. Permitting timeline could be a little longer, because it needs to go through the LCP process. John can opine on that if you have questions. And then some site constraints with power lines and electrical facilities. But some key opportunities, close to existing wastewater infrastructure, sites at a lower elevation in South Bay, so pumping costs are a little lower, close proximity to reclamation opportunities, and then a lower cost in South Bay. So this is a summary table from our report, and we've included cost opinions, and these are based on input received from the peer review team, or peer review panel, particularly at South Bay Boulevard, and then applying some of those same, those same at South Bay Boulevard, and then applying some of those same assumptions to the other sites where appropriate. And, so the site range, or the cost range now, with contingencies, full recycled water is South Bay Boulevard at $150 million, the next is Gianini at 138, or 138.7, or 139, Rigetti at about 134, Dynegy at 131, Hanson at 125. And so these cost opinions were developed with a lot of the work from the facility master plan for unit costs, the soft cost assumptions and contingency assumptions that were vetted with the peer review panel, so these numbers are consistent among each other. So, some, let's see, some key findings, really, and there are three factors that are really related for a successful project, and it's cost permitting and timing, and these are all integral. Timely site selections needed, as you all know, time's money, and we need to, we want to meet the city's five-year goal, we want to follow regional water quality control board's direction to build a new facility as quickly as possible, we need to avoid jeopardizing potential funding source from the WIFI program, that could considerably drive up costs if we have to resort to bond financing or some other public financing approach, and we also want to minimize cost increases through inflation and cost escalation over time. And construction, some of the construction cost differences between some of the sites could be largely offset by the risk of schedule delays. If there's one we could move forward more cleanly, if you get held up on a project, that can add real dollars to it. The WIFI alone, low-interest funding for up to 49% of your project, that's a significant cost savings. The application deadline is July 17th, 2018. Sufficient SEQA analysis is needed to allow the EPA to complete their, the NEPA process, the federal environmental process, and full reclamation will be required for us to be competitive to receive that loan. Now, it's our understanding from the EPA/WIFI program staff that they have enough money to fully fund all 11 of the communities across the country, that they've invited to submit applications, but we've got to show that we rank just as high now as we did when we submitted that application, even if some project parameters could change. And one of the key things was a water supply benefit, production of recycled water, so that's going to be critical. So in terms of costs, the range of capital costs at the sites is, it ranges from 125 to 150 million, including full reclamation. The highest cost is South Bay, lowest cost at Hanson, lowest cost east of Highway One, if you look at that as a demarcation, based on Coastal Commission's letter, is 133 million at Rigetti. The main reason for the difference in costs is really the distance of the pipeline, and then the size of the pump station changes as the pressures change and the distances change along the pipelines. Long-term operation and maintenance costs were relatively similar among the sites, so it was in the neighborhood of 3.7 million, varied by plus or minus 40, around a range of around 40,000. The extended permitting timeframe will increase costs, and it can increase uncertainty because we don't know what conditions could be imposed on projects that are going to face more scrutiny from Coastal Commission. So, key findings related to permitting, letter received from Coastal Commission Deputy Director Dan Carl, and really, a lot of the bullets here correspond with what they've told us. The most straightforward permitting path is South Bay Boulevard. The next most straightforward is Rigetti, although, you know, we've heard, we know there are neighborhood concerns. The most uncertain permitting path is Hanson and Dynegy Tank Farm. Will face coastal issues, staff, Coastal Commission estimates permitting could take 24 months, unknown conditions that could be imposed on the project could increase costs beyond what's shown here. One of the questions that I know folks, "Well, what do you think they might make us do there?" Well, it's speculative to say right now, we wouldn't know until we'd gotten pretty far into the process. We'd not tried to include any concrete across levees or anything of that nature, because we just don't know right now. Permitting delay or denial could jeopardize the WIFI alone, we have a strict timeline for that, and it requires an amendment to the city's local coastal plan. In terms of timing, shortest timeframe would be South Bay Boulevard, we have the fewest regulatory obstacles, clearest permitting path, most technical work's been completed at that site. Potentially longer timeframe is Rigetti. Neighborhood concerns could extend the SEQA process, we anticipate coastal stream and cultural resources issues there that we don't have at South Bay. Really, the most uncertain timeframe is Hanson and the Dynegy Tank Farm. And Coastal Commission staff's estimating 24 months, there's no certainty of permit approval due to the past history, and that's something they've enforced with us several times. So the timing at Gianini, likely to be greater than South Bay and Rigetti, requires an amendment to the city's LCP, little technical work completed, and there's potential for neighborhood concerns due to proximity. So, I want to talk a few minutes about cost reductions, because, you know, the key thing is, before we can pursue grants or even the loans, we have to have a project selected, a site selected, we have to get a project description together, we need to get through the SEQA process so that we're truly shovel-ready before we can apply for any grants, and really before we can complete the loan applications. So, timing, you know, for cost reductions, key with time is move quickly, reduce permitting risk, reduce capital costs through the design-build process, use that process to evaluate processes and vendors and proposers on a level playing field, where they can compete with each other and the city gets the benefit of that creativity and that competition, but do it through that process. Implement the peer review recommendations, which we've already done in the budgets, cost opinions, and then pursue grants and low-interest loans. So the WIFI program is currently around 2.6%, SRF's about 1.8% right now, bond financing is 5%, so it's almost double WIFI, and it's, you know, almost three times the SRF rate. Grants, the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grant, which we're in dialogue with Bureau of Reclamation for that, is up to, they'll award 20% of a project up to $20 million. That's a big chunk of the recycled water component in terms of the capital cost. And then loan forgiveness from the State Revolving Fund, Green Project Reserve, and the Water Recycling Program, get up to 4.3 million through that. And those are ones that we've discussed with their staff, we know that the project, as currently described or envisioned, meets the criteria for those, and so, you know, but you can't be certain in that when you go out for the Prop 218 process for rates. There has to be some faith that the council's going to implement every measure they can to bring costs down, and I can commit we will, we'll do everything we can to identify grants and loans and bring the cost down, but we need a project description first, and we need to get through the SEQA process to do that. But these are all readily programs that are out there that we feel are very, we are very competitive for, but, you know, there's no certainty, you're competing for those. So, next steps, first, the city council, you all need to select a site. Second is the rate study expert needs to update the 2017 draft rate study. And then to keep the project moving forward, we need to circulate the updated draft rate study, schedule the Proposition 218 protest hearing, and then release the RFQ for design build, and release the draft environmental impact report, followed by certification. Now, the schedule on that, getting up through the draft EIR, that could be a six-to-eight month process, or it could be considerably longer if we go with some of the other sites. So that's where we need direction, because we can refine the schedule once we know where we're going with the project. At this point, I'm going to ask John to come up and talk about community outreach.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What I want to talk about just for a few minutes, I know you asked about outreach, and where we go from here. So much of that depends on what you decide to do. What we can do is lay out some strategies and discuss some of the formal and informal processes that could happen or will happen, depending on the site, but I think, as I'll point out here, so much depends on that. One of the things that had been discussed, and it's something that you might want to consider, was the idea of maybe you want to refine your project goals. I know the community worked with you to determine what those goals are, and so much of what we're looking at in the design is based on those goals, whether that's tertiary treated water, reclamation, ancillary facilities, and so forth, those are still the goals. You don't have to do that, you don't have to revisit those goals, but by doing that, that does help define ultimately what kind of project you want at the end of the day. If you were to do that, that would be something you'd want to do sooner than later, but the critical thinking in there would be that if you don't do that, we're still focusing on the goals that we have. One thing to consider, a lot of the funding issues that Mike brought up, especially the WIFI alone, the feedback from Coastal Commission, he didn't mention the regional board, but feedback from the regional board, water reclamation's a critical component, both in terms of getting funding and helping to offset certain costs through grants potentially, and in the end to be consistent with both coastal and regional board direction. So that's one thing to consider in that process. Another kind of outreach is the continued regulatory agency input. Again, this will depend highly, and it's something we've been doing so far, and by that, what do I mean? I mean, we've been talking not only with Coastal Commission and Regional Board, but also San Luis Obispo County staff, who would be critical in terms of permitting a site, a facility either at the Rigetti site or at South Bay. Why? Because in those cases, those are in the county. It seems counterintuitive, but it's actually a little bit easier to permit a site outside the city than within the city. The reason for that is because those areas can be permitted under the county's local coastal program. Under their LCP, you could actually permit a site within areas that are otherwise agriculture or open space. It recognizes that in the county, that's a common situation, and for example, in the case of Cayucus, that's how they follow their permitting path. So we've met with the county to discuss that, they're completely receptive to that idea, and so is Coastal Commission, so there is a path that's understood. And in the case of, if you were to choose a site within the city, either the sites west of Highway One or Gianini, which you'd be in a position to do, would be to amend your local coastal plan. You'd have to do that because your LCP right now doesn't anticipate wastewater or water reclamation facility at any of those sites. It becomes more complicated because you're undergoing an LCP update right now, and that doesn't really account for a facility at those sites either. What the Coastal Commission has recommended to us is not to conflate those two processes, to keep the current LCP update as clean as possible, and then, as a separate process, if you go to a site within the city, to go through that process. You can see there's certain complications in that, to make sure they're coordinated and don't step on each other's process, but it is, you can see, an extra kind of step that if you were to go in that direction. But if you were to go there, that's an immediate outreach step, to work with these agencies, whoever they are, the county, obviously, city staff, but also the Coastal Commission, to follow the path, and really get that going as soon as possible. There's no reason to wait on that, there's no reason to wait for the EIR to be done to start that process, it's just we can't finish that process till the EIR is done. In fact, that's exactly how Cayucus worked their project. Then there's community outreach of different kinds that goes along with all this, including the website updates, flyers as needed. One of the things that you heard back from the community through some of the correspondence was, in this past couple of months, and we've heard it before when there's been a pause on the project, is that it's very important that people feel like they know what's going on. You know, it's only been a couple of months since you gave us direction in July, and we did come back in early August, but even those one-month intervals, people wonder what's happening in terms of the reporting, or they're doing their own research, or meeting with their own, with agencies, and learning a little bit here and there, and of course, what you get back, citizen groups might be a little bit different kind of feedback than you might get as the staff actually trying to implement the project, but again, those are, you get different paths. So we need to make sure that we continue to update the website and whatever information that's crucial for the public to know, to have it out there. Our goal is transparency and to try to get the project built at the end of the day. Then there's the outreach to property owners. In the case of South Bay Boulevard, that's a well-known process. In the case of Rigetti, we know that property is for sale, we've done some preliminary outreach to the Realtor and to the property owner, just very little at this point, because we don't have any real direction there, but we do know that that is a property that we would have to do more work on. In the case of the others, it's the same situation, the one caveat in the case of Hanson is that the city does jointly own that site with CSD, the complication there being, you'd have to work with CSD to come up with a way to make that work, and what CSD's concerns there would be, we're not entirely sure, though we've met with them to preliminarily discuss that, and they did indicate to us, yes, we'd want to talk to you about that if you went down that path. And then there's, then there's obviously the outreach to the neighbors, wherever we go. In the case of Rigetti, we've gone down that path as well, so we can anticipate what that might look like. In the case of Gianini, we have a similar neighborhood proximity situation, so we can anticipate that might look something like Rigetti, but it might not, we're not sure about that, but we do know we have a housing area fairly close and about the same proximity as Rigetti. In the case of South Bay, we understand that one, we've done a lot of outreach there, both in terms of the senior facility and also neighbors across Highway One and the neighboring ranching properties, so we have a feel for that one, and we know that's a manageable situation, generally speaking. In the case of the two sites west of Highway One, they have their own issues, obviously, Dynegy is its own separate kind of entity that we'd have to deal with as a property owner, but again, there's the high school and there's other residences in the area that we'd obviously have to do some working with, and all that takes time. And as Mike points out, time does take money, and those are factors we didn't account for in our estimating, but there is a lot of, a lot of things that, there's a question that's come up, why do costs keep changing, among other reasons? Well, one, we've talked about one of the reasons, we've had some refinement through peer review, and also been able to drill down a little bit more through the facility master plan on South Bay, and you can see the cost estimate has gone down a bit since the peer review report, but again, some of it has to do with uncertainty, with outreach and timing, and at the end of the day, those are things that you can expect a certain amount of fluidity until we have the projects very well established. So again, we don't want, you know, it's not a bad thing to see things move around a bit, because they will, until we have a strong, established project. And again, the idea, for example, of trying to artificially constrain, say, this is what the project's going to cost, that's not a realistic way to look at this. You really do have to figure out what it actually costs based on your goals, to figure out how to refine that, how to offset those costs wherever we can, either through the soft costs or through grants, loans, and so forth, and part of it is simple cost control through time management. And then finally, and this is, this goes without saying, but as we go through this process, the continued outreach with the council and community in general, wherever that's appropriate, however that's appropriate, but obviously at the council level. But once you get to a site selection, a lot of things start kicking into gear. We're able to start right away in the SEQA process formally, we've actually formally started about a year ago through the notice of preparation, which is to say, we're going to prepare a SEQA document, here are the issues we're looking at, please tell us if you agree with that. We've gone through that process. What we haven't been able to do is any real work toward that, because we don't have a site, and that's a crucial consideration, because once you get that SEQA process going, and you get to the draft EIR stage, then you're in a position to have more formal outreach through that process, where people comment on the EIR and the project and alternatives and so forth, leading to the end of the day, your ability to approve a project. Remember, you don't formally approve this project until you have the EIR, final EIR, certified, which you will do, that's your job to do, and at that point, you'd say, you know what, the EIR said this, the public has said this through the EIR, we have all the information we need, we now approve this project. Until then, you have to consider, whatever site you select, whatever project you preliminarily designed as just that, preliminary. It's one reason why bidders are reluctant, in general, to bid on things too early, when there's not a project either well-defined, or approved, or a SEQA document, they will tend to look at it as, well, there's a lot of They will tend to look at it as, well, there's a lot of uncertainty here, and this is an expensive process. Some bidders may look at it differently. They may say, well, if we can get in early, once we get in, then we can control the situation a little bit easier. And if you were to select in that method, to have someone say, you know, we can do for this amount this easily, this quickly, but once you have them, and then the unknowns start becoming knowns, and it becomes more complicated, they're in a better position to say, well, this might cost a little bit more. Oh, this is more than we thought. Oh, we didn't expect that. But by then, you've got your consultant, and it's hard to undo that. That's why a competitive playing field is very important in terms of the process here. And that's another form of outreach, frankly. So with that, I'll leave it back to you and maybe turn it over to Rob for some closing thoughts, and we're here to answer questions on a variety of issues that we're aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and John. Just want to bring up an issue tangentially related outreach. The project team issued an expression of interest letter to potential contractors and vendors, which, without careful reading, may have led people to believe that a site was selected and that we were going to South Bay. The expression of interest letter did go on to say that council has yet to make that choice for sites and would be reviewing that. We've modified that letter to make that a little bit clearer and reposted that to our website and to the bid boards, so any contractors and vendors are absolutely clear where it stands. The purpose of that letter is to collect vendor and contractor information so that when we release the request for qualifications for the design bid process, that we have a complete list of vendors, so that when we provide information regarding the project through program webinars, that those vendors, registered vendors, will be able to view that and understand the parameters of the project and what they will be ultimately bidding on. So we did make corrections to, or clarifications to the expression of interest letter, reposted it to the website, reposted it to the bid boards. With that, we will turn it back to council for any questions you might have before the regular session.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify, thanks for the presentation, but this presentation is what we'll see for the regular city council meeting, and the first, as I understand it, right? So what I saw on the first slide was, provide direction as necessary, but this is just the study session, the direction comes at the city council meeting, as it was laid out in that slide. So I just want to make sure, this is more of a study session for information, the conversation and discussion for direction and stuff will come at the city council meeting, even though the slide kind of pointed that out.
Correct, and I think I prefaced that slide by saying that at the regular council meeting, this is what we'll be asking council to be doing.
Sorry, I might be repeating, thanks, thank you for that. With that, we'll open it for questions from council on this, and from, thanks for the presentation. I'm not going to get into a lot of necessarily questions and discussion myself, and reserve a lot of that for the regular city council meeting at that point, but I was going to turn to my left and look towards right if you had any questions or comments, and then Matt, we'll just come down the right line, and that, we could probably just conclude this section, take a recess, and then we'll come back at the regular city council meeting to have full discussion. Red?
Thanks. We have had, even though Toro Creek was not one of the sites that we studied for tonight's session, there's a lot of public interest in pursuing that, and I know, Rob, that you have looked at it as a potential site, and I wonder if you could tell us what the situation is with that site?
Apologize for not having the microphone on. Sometimes I wish we would do paper. My apologies for looking for this.
Well, maybe I could start with a couple of things while you're looking.
Sure.
One is, the distance for a site on Toro Creek Road is about the same as it is for South Bay Boulevard, so the piping costs would be approximately.
Approximately the same.
And even though there is a pipe in place that runs from Cayucus to Morro Bay, that's designed to a size only to carry Cayucus material.
So there's, Cayucus has the ability to use a couple of pipelines that are, exist between the two communities. One is a jointly-owned line in Main Street, and then the other is their solely-owned line, which is Portion-Forest Main, Portion-Graffiti line. We're presuming, based on their project description, that they'll be using their solely-owned line retrofitted to carry the effluent back to the outfall to discharge that waste. The jointly-owned line has raw sewage that comes in from the abutting streets in it, so it still needs to carry that raw sewage, so it's not able to be repurposed for a conveyance system back to the north, or an effluent line, reclaimed water line, or any other purpose. It still needs to maintain its original purpose. With the Toro Creek alternative, we've looked at the information that we can glean from the reports that the CSD has printed, and don't see a economic benefit to the city to do that. A preliminary cost opinion for building a standalone water reclamation facility is about $158 million, which would be more than the cost of building a facility at South Bay Boulevard. We would need to build an additional mile of raw wastewater and recycled water line. It's a little bit longer than it is to South Bay, and the CSD board has consistently chosen not to participate in a joint facility with the city, as late as their letter to the city of April 15, where they said they chose to go alone and not participate with a joint facility. I understand folks have had communications with a single board member and their general manager, but we do not know what the district board would vote upon if asked that question.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Matt?
I also have a number of questions that I'll hold for later, but coming into this presentation right now, one thing that strikes me is the need for some, for me anyway, some simplicity. And we talk about the WFI alone for the South Bay site and the possible, if we could still have it for the Rigetti site, and whether or not, and then if we have to go to regular percentage of points that we'd have to get on any other site. What would be the percentage of difference on payments, Rob? Do you know? If we get a South Bay site with WFI loans, or a Rigetti site with WFI loans, what would be the change in payments for a standard rate user? Do we have that data? And then when we think about either Hanson, Dynegy, any of those sites west, do we have any data, so people can see, this is, instead of talking of the gobbledygook of all the information, can we get down to brass tacks and see what's going to happen to people, could happen to people's payments?
It's really a simple economics issue. It's a time value of money calculation. The interest rate for conventional bond financing is about twice what it is for, and I'm going to call these subsidized loans, because we're receiving a subsidy either from the state or the federal government because of the merits of the project, to finance the project. The cost in the conventional bond financing really outstrips the savings and capital cost. It's really, if you were to do the bond financing of $150 million project, it's about equivalent of building a $167 million project, is what the, having to go to conventional financing means on that project. So Mike may have some slide that drills down to...
Well, I guess my question comes down to this. No, Mike, and I think you might, we might need some of your ideas here. When we talked, I think in the last six months or so, we've talked about someone's payment, if we went to the South Bay site for a standard rate payer, and I forget how many units that we were talking, four units for that rate payer, we were talking about $200 for a monthly payment. That's for a South Bay site that would get the WFI loan. If we went back to the Hanson site for a rate payer that's using four units of water, and the lower cost, if it were 80 million for that site, with the conventional bond prices, what would that do to that person's rates? And what would be, do we have that information in terms of what they would be paying per month?
So we played around a little bit with that. I'm going to, let's see, we want to find, go to slide 42. So one of the things we wanted to do was try to address that, just really in our own minds, to understand what that does to the project cost. So we got a couple of bars. On the left, we show the 2017, 2018, you know, approved rates, and actually, let's see, that's the 2018, 2019 rates. So it's a build, at completion, at the end of your rate increases, you top out at around 150 a month, water and sewer, under your current rate increase, that you already, are your current rates that you already have in place. And I believe that those 1920 rates, Rob, is that right?
Five years after 2015, so, yes, 1920 rates.
So in the draft rate study from April...
2021, sorry.
From April earlier this year, we were at 241 combined water and sewer rate, and this is for a typical residential customer, like we see five...
Five units of water.
Of water. Well, if we take the 125-ish million-dollar Hanson project, laid out here, full recycled water, and we apply bond financing of 5%, which is the assumption from the rate study that the consultant had used to also compare these, then that becomes, that's a $15 a month higher rate combined than what you would have at South Bay Boulevard under the, with the 2017 draft rate study. And the primary influence on that is bond financing versus SRF or WFI combined. So it makes a huge, it makes a real difference to the bottom line, that financing.
Okay, so with that, and then, so when we go back to talking about the timing, and I think I came in on the end of it, talking about the WFI and estate bond, bonds that we could get, and in terms of your analysis with the Rigetti site, could those be, do we have enough time to get those with everything, as we go through this list of actions that we need to do?
We have until July 17 of 2018 to submit a complete application to the EPA for the WFI funding. That requires us to select a site, complete the environmental work by that time, and hopefully certify, well, certify an EIR in time to get that application in.
Okay, one last.
It's very speculative whether we could get all that done in time to make those deadlines.
And it, okay, and I guess, go ahead.
One quick clarification, is the certification of the EIR is not required prior to applying for the WFI loan, but we do need to have the draft EIR done, because we need all that environmental analysis to hand to WFI, the WFI program folks, so they can develop their NEPA document. So we need to be very close. We need to have a draft EIR ready to go.
And in terms of, I guess, historical record, the last 10 or 15 years, do these WFI loans and state bond loans, do those come around every once in a while?
WFI is a brand-new program. This is the, it's maiden voyage, if you will. We don't know whether it will be a program that will cycle every couple of years, or we really don't, we really don't know. Now, state revolving loan funds, that funding program is, has been available for decades, will continue to be available. One of the challenges, though, is it's kind of just our luck, if you will, between now and 2021. There's a short-term cash shortfall in that loan. It's a revolving loan fund, and they had some very large agencies take out loans for construction with, starting with, from the Prop 1 program, starting, you know, the 2015 timeframe. And so they won't start paying some of that back till you get to 2020 or 2021. In discussions with the SRF program folks, the SRF program is becoming much more competitive as a result, so there is money available, but agencies will need to compete for it. It used to not be as competitive as it is now, but having the WFI funding, you know, our sense, and also with input we receive from state revolving loan fund program folks, is going to be critical to helping us rank high on that, in that process, because if they can only fund 51% of the project, that's a whole lot better position for them, and they still know we've got the other 49% covered, so they can co-fund.
I guess, and one last question in terms of talking about the EPA loan for the, is that also, that just depends on federal funding, and does that come around every once in a while? Is that a fairly consistent?
As Mike stated, the, this is the first year of WFI funding.
Sorry, I'm talking about the EPA for the reclamation, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grant Program has been an enduring program. It's been reauthorized for several years. It's a $20 million grant maximum project, per project, or 20% of your project cost, which is ever, whichever is less. So that is an enduring program. It does require a reclamation component to be competitive for that loan, or, excuse me, grant.
Does that reclamation component have to be ready, or could it be in the works, like we're going to do it down the road?
It has to be part of the project to qualify for that grant.
There also is the way that that, they, it's 20% of your project up to $20 million. So you want to go in with the full, if you went in with a Phase 2 later, that might be 30 million or so, you would only get 20% of that 30 million, whereas if you go in now, you can get the max amount of the 20 million, if that makes sense, because you're going in with a larger project.
All right. John?
Thank you, and thank you all for the presentation. I'm going to hold the majority of my questions when everybody's in here to give everybody a chance, so I don't have to be redundant and repeat them. I'm going to make one comment and two, with regard to the question that Councilman McCoweski asked, because I think it's very relevant. One, if you've listened to the Fed recently, they're talking about reducing the balance sheet and raising rates fairly quickly, so the impact may be even more than we've just heard. By no means is this rocket science. I did the calculation on the Hanson site versus the South Bay site in terms of debt service. My assumption was simply a 2.3% cost of money for the Hanson site versus a 5.5% cost of money for the South Bay site, and if you look at that over a period of 30 years, the delta on that in terms of debt service, or the difference in cost to the city, is $74.5 million just in interest costs to build on that site because of an increase in interest rates. Secondarily, if you get that down to an annual cost, and you include in that the escalation costs of 3% that we'll probably see waiting two years, I calculated a total impact per year at $1.9 million. year at $1.9 million. And if you divide that by the number of rate payers that we have, which is 5,346, you get about a $350 per month increase in the cost to, on an annual basis, to folks just for debt service coverage and escalation costs going to South Bay, excuse me, going on the west side versus the east side. So it almost becomes, from a cost standpoint, and I hesitate to use the term no-brainer, to not even consider going west because of the delays in the cost of money. And so that's just to add to what you said, and I calculated 30 bucks per month, but then again, my only question is for Mr. Panoni, realizing that on the east side, there may be challenges by a number of the neighborhoods there, could you comment on the potential litigation process and give us a magnitude or estimate in terms of cost of litigation to either the individuals that litigate and/or the city, and what that process looks like, should that happen?
If someone were to challenge the city's decision on any site, the cost for, for the city to defend that decision could be between $200,000 and $400,000. The time could be, I'm just estimating, to go to the, to get a trial court decision would probably take a year maybe, and then I'm sure that whoever loses that trial court decision would appeal it, so the appellate process would probably be another six to eight months, so, you know, one and a half on the short range, really short range, to two years maybe, to get through the litigation. And with that litigation not being finalized, I'm guessing all the funding opportunities that are available during that time may get granted to other people who are ready, and then that money won't be there, so you have that loss risk. If the lawsuit is successful, and I'm only saying that because I want to advise you of that, I don't believe substantively a court is going to, because I know of all the work that's going to be done to support any decision you make, whatever it is, I'm not fearful that a court is going to overturn your decision, but if they did, in addition to attorney fees you pay for your defense, you're going to pay the other side's attorney fees too, and my experience has been double the fees that we charge, and that's what the other side would be asking the court to grant them as attorney fee award.
Thank you.
Marla?
Yeah, I'm also going to save most of my questions for the full council meeting, but thank you for the presentation and for the drone flyover. We had wanted to actually try to arrange for people to see the sites, because I think it's really important to see them, and so I appreciate the fact that we've done the next best thing, which is to show at least a visual appearance of what they look like and where they are. I just have a couple of clarifying questions at this point. I just wanted to ask if in our current LCP, the DynaG site would be industrial and therefore would not require an amendment, since there's an industrial plant on it?
The DynaG site is our most heavy industrially, has our most heavy industrial zoning over it, and a wastewater treatment plan, I believe, is one of the allowed uses that's in there, probably with a conditional use permit.
So it would or would not require?
They couldn't hear you. Could you repeat it?
Yeah, our existing zoning for that site is our heavier industrial zoning and would allow for that type of use to go in there.
Right, so it would not require an amendment, probably if we were to look at the DynaG site?
I believe that's the case.
Okay. And in the slide presentation, could you tell us what is meant by long-term relocation condition, which?
That is.
And this was by the Coastal Commission?
Yes, by the Coastal Commission. So on recent public infrastructure projects, the coastal has been requiring those projects that seek a coastal permit for upgrades, modifications, or new uses in proximity to the coast to analyze the need to move the facility should sea level rise impact, or climate change, impact the property, without the allowance for armoring of the site, significant armoring of the site. So they're not going to issue a, they're going to issue a permit, let's say they, we make it to a hearing, and on the Hanson site, and they issue a permit. It would be a time-constrained permit, that we would need to go back to them at some point in time and show the analysis, either how the facility can stay there because it's not impacted by sea level rise, or what our plan is to move that facility. And I'm sure that we wouldn't wait 30 years to try to fund that, so it would be a rather significant cost to plan for the moving of a facility of that magnitude in 30 years.
Okay. And can you just tell us a little bit about what the Coastal Commission actions have been with respect to other jurisdictions that have tried to get a development permit on the coast for a facility like this?
Sure. We have as close as South County Sanitation District that performs some major upgrades to a facility that required a coastal development permit, not a new facility, these were just upgrades to the facility. The staff recommended a 10-year permit. The general manager there argued that a 10-year permit wasn't feasible because of the type of loan that they're going for, and the commission agreed with them and issued a 30-year permit, but they need to analyze what it will take to move that facility by the lifetime of that permit.
Okay, thank you. One last question, and this, I guess, is for Mr. Rickenbach. Could we be doing community outreach while we're going through the permitting and SEQA process? There's no reason why we'd have to wait, is there?
No, no reason to wait at all. I think the outreach, as I said, takes a lot of forms. I think a lot of it would be, it's a lot clearer once we have a site to know who and to what forms we'd be reaching out to, but sure, we'd want to get that going right away.
Right. And I will be interested in hearing more about that permitting and SEQA process, but I think I'll wait till everyone can hear it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. If that concludes everyone's questions, I'll just open up one question as far as the goals go, and then conclude this part of the study session, so we could take a short recess and then come back at 6 o'clock for the, for the regular city council meeting. So we talked about refining project goals, and just wanted to, based on the direction for the analysis of what we have tonight, we asked to provide us with, to reduce the costs and meet all the minimum requirements to provide a treatment facility and a water reclamation facility, and it's broken down into those categories. So with that in mind, would all those parameters that have been built into this analysis meet the bare minimum, and could we use those as, as goals moving forward?
We've been listening to council throughout this process. May appear that we've been listening harder more recently than we were a few months ago, but we have been listening to council. I think, my opinion, others might have a different opinion, the refinement of the goals is more of a formal process that the council might take. I think direction from council throughout this process has, in effect, refined those goals. For, give me just one simple example, early on in the process, we discovered that because of the treatment systems that we're looking at, composting is not cost-effective, nor is it viable. While we didn't, council did not take official action to eliminate that goal, based on our discussion and early direction from council, we've eliminated that from the process that we're, we're looking at. So I truly believe that the goals operationally have changed, we just haven't officially restated the, any new goals. Does that clarify?
Going to the question, though, this, which is helpful, but based on direction, but I think maybe that'll be another discussion item at the regular council meeting, but, and I'll just leave it for that. Okay. So folks, with that, thanks for all, for all coming. This was just a, basically, this was a really good preview for us, a study session for, for council, it provides also the audience to be prepared, coming up in the city, for the city council meeting at 6 o'clock. We will repeat this exact thing, we will have public comment for all this. I know we did limit our public comment for 10 minutes at the beginning of this, knowing that we will be opening up public comment for this item at a regular city council meeting. So with that, we can go ahead and adjourn our special meeting, and we'll take a recess, and then we'll come back at 6 o'clock for our regular city council meeting. Thank you.